This is to advise the general public that compliance with the Oklahoma City Act of Little Lake Harbor Education Clause and Code to add to the offices of the Board of Education located at 307 Brockmont Road, Little Lake Harbor, New Jersey. Facts on February 28th, 2023. The Asbury Park Press and Land City Press to the offices of an intangible clerk of Little Lake Harbor, a meeting noting notice setting forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. Can you stand up and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public which stands in recognition of our service.
Can we have a roll call though?
Ms. Herbert?
Here.
Mr. Filicello?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Ms. Zalesnok?
Here.
Ms. Sattler?
Here.
Dr. Snyder?
Here.
We have corn.
Can I recommend a motion to approve the agenda? Do you have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I would just like to discuss number seven, just residents forum, the whole paragraph at some point. I think it's a little long. Take a couple sentences out. It might be discouraging to the public.
Anyone else? Can we have a roll call though?
Ms. Herbert?
Hey, how are you?
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Zalesnok?
Yes.
Ms. Sattler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to residents forum, agenda items only. The Board of Education now welcomes the public to comment on the items which are on our agenda tonight. Community members should first try to resolve their concerns by speaking directly to the school administrators before bringing those concerns to the board. It may not always be possible or appropriate for the board to directly answer questions during the public comment period. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to make their statement. No one may speak more than once on the same topic. You are required to give your name and address before speaking. Please keep your comments respectful and non-denominatory and maintain a little bit of form of appropriate for public meeting where minors may be in the audience. Would anyone like to speak? Seeing as there's no one, let's move on to the boardwork session. First, we have the policy committee discussion.
Okay, thank you. So I really want to just discuss an email that came from Ms. Martin, and she had suggested some changes to a current policy. And I'm not even really relating, relatedness to the content of that change, but just referring more back to the procedures that are supposed to be followed for the committees. So I know we had a training by school boards, and Mary Ann Freeman went over having board committees versus board of the whole, and she gave out a bunch of documents and gave some suggestions and really went over the process. So in this case, an email came from Ms. Martin, and the president was copied, the Supreme, Ms. Herbert was on the committee, Mary Ann and myself. And I believe that Lisa, you're on the policy committee too, right?
Yes.
So I didn't see her name on that, so I didn't know why if it was a committee that meant she wasn't involved with that. But regardless.
Oh, no, the committee did not leave. And I re-talked through email. And the policy that I sent was just asked to put it on the agenda so we could discuss it on the whole board.
Okay, so the process for committees, the committee would get together if they wanted to change a policy. So you could get together via Zoom. So let's just say you pick a date and time, the three of you get together via Zoom, and you discuss a policy. So then you would discuss possible changes, why do you want to change it? What was the research behind it? And then you would bring all of your suggested changes to the superintendent next. So now I would review it, like we talked about this before. If an administrator's on your committee, it's helpful because we can have that conversation while you're having your meeting. If not, then you would send that to me. I would give back to the committee and say, hey, you know, I think this is great or, you know, legality wise, it could just be careful of X, Y, and Z. And then it would go at the next meeting to the entire board to review and discuss, and then they would give you their feedback, and then changes would be made. And then the following meeting, it would be on for approval. Does that make sense?
Yeah, in regard to this policy that we discussed it at the last meeting, that's why I thought we could move forward. So context-wise, I get what you're saying, and I think we all understand the process. But in regard to this particular policy, we went into detail at length during executive without this. So I felt we were all kind of in agreement on the same page, and I felt we could just discuss. And I just was asking to put it on.
Sure, and I don't, I don't have an issue with what you want to do to the policy, but those discussions would be done in public. So the public would hear why you want to change the policy, what was the research behind it? And then, as I said, whatever the definitive answer was, it would be on the next agenda for approval.
Yeah, and that's what I was asking. Put it on the agenda to discuss.
Okay, so why don't we just do that now? So Strauss Esme gives a sample of the same policy that you're referring to, and then they have basically checkboxes, like who do you want to be able to speak to the attorney? It says superintendent of schools, board designate, school business administrator, board president, board presidents designate, vice president, school business administrator, and board secretary. So it's the options that you gave. And the only other thing I just want to let the board know is, not that I have a concern with additional people having access to the lawyer, but our bill just in the month of January was $9,000. So it's only going to increase if more people have access to the attorney to contact. So as long as the board is okay with that, you know, we can make those changes if everyone's comfortable and we can put that on the agenda for Tuesday night. Anyone not comfortable with that?
Yeah, I, I think the reason is, is that if someone has a concern and I'm the only contact person, there's days where I have no time available. And whereas if Laura, who's the vice president, has that ability, then I can say, Laura, can you reach out on my behalf? And then it works out. Otherwise, that I literally, some days from Monday until Thursday, might not be the first time I have a free moment that I can email the attorney. They're pretty much between nine and five, not even eight AM. I've worked with a lot of attorneys, not be against them at all. It's not, but they don't start at eight AM, whereas that's where a window where I could have a window to speak with someone during the day before my classes begin. And so not having that ability, I think that's where this stemmed from. And especially, it is the board's ability and our job to make and write policy. That's what we're, we're afforded to do. And with attorney that we have on hand, we need to refer to them with regards to policy. We could do that, and based off of what Mr. Lee says, he's not, I don't know what advice he will give in public versus what he requires in executive, as we've seen, right? So I, that would just lengthen executive session and lengthen the meeting. So that's what I think we're just really trying to do. And with regards to legal fees, I don't know that those are from us, the board itself, versus the administration.
It was, maybe it's.
I mean, I don't think the majority of it is from us because, I mean, I could maybe count on one hand how many times I've actually contacted the attorney in my entire reign as president.
I have a copy of the bill if you want to see it. But regardless, do you want the policy to say then president and vice president? Or do you want president or designate and vice president?
Well, I guess the question is also too, how many designees can you have? Is it just you, or is it you and the director of special ed? Or was it you, the director of special ed, the supervisor? Like, is there a lot of people that you can designate, I guess was the question also? All right.
So typically, the only person I designate would be the special ed director because she has a lot of questions in terms of special ed law and cases that we're dealing with. So I have to monitor that. But, and I'm not the Supreme, I'm asking, do you want it to be president and designate, vice president and designate? Or just president, vice president?
I, I find the president.
I think the way Abby wrote it is prudent to do it that way in case one of us is not available. I mean, it is the board's journey.
And, and it's an option. Right, we're not necessarily going to get to the third person, but it's there if we need it to continue to keep doing business.
Yeah, I think it's the assumption that we're not always like, we're volunteers. We're doing this as a service. There's going to be times, maybe I'll be Bermuda for two weeks or something, and you're not going to be able to reach me. And maybe Laura has the same vacation time, and then there's going to be someone else that's going to have to reach out, Armida. It's about time.
The communication is limited, right? It's like limited to not all time, and it flows through the president and the vice president.
That's right.
Okay, so we will put that on for Tuesday night. And then the next thing on there is just hiring in between. Mrs. Fidnaro is going to need to hire in between Tuesday's meeting and our next meeting, send paraprofessionals for IEP needs. So she just wants to make sure that the board is okay with that. That motion will be added to the agenda. And as we do, we send that information to you in terms of who we're going to be recommending to hire and their resume. And then the other one was the full-time OT that we are going to be sharing with Eagleswood.
Are the Paris and Blasters budgeted? Are they already?
In the current budget, yes.
And so they're not new positions?
Well, there's, it's part of the special ed budget, but they are going to be new positions.
So are they a result of new IEPs coming into place?
Yes.
That require one-on-one?
Yeah.
And how many?
Three.
Three? And what about the OT? What have we been doing to service OT?
Kelly, when it comes to that, I could explain it a little bit. We've been trying to look for OT for a while, a part-time one, and we haven't been successful. So Kelly's been putting, you know, the posting out a few times.
So regards to the power, do you have any movements? Have you had Little Lake there start, because we don't have support for them to start? Significant needs, not necessarily behavioral, but also medical driven as well. In regards to the OT, so we have quoted and interviewed about seven applicants for OT. Nobody can meet the need that we have right now. Eagleswood reached out to us to say, okay, we have an OT that we can potentially share for full-time. This is our need, this is your need, and that is. Obviously, full-time position is more appealing to somebody than a part-time. One of the part-time position that we're also finding is, even if we offer it to someone, the OT that we've interviewed with, they don't give us two days, we need four. So it's all in our contract, which is about eighty to ninety dollars an hour. So an additional hiring of OT on staff, we have also paper on stage for, for fees.
The benefits.
So it would be what? So Eagleswood offered to pay a certain percent of the full-time cost per next year.
So they're just one day and we're four days?
I mean, they have an independent number, which we will.
I, I think I would like to see this shared service agreement before approving something like this. As to what the split up is between Eagleswood and Little Lake in regards to benefits and salary.
It would be a twenty eighty, so they.
So like to see it in writing, and what specific, and how many students we're going to be servicing with those four days and the one day in Eagleswood.
So you want the case of it.
I just would like to see it in writing, like in the past, we've had a lot of issues with our shared service agreements where it's not specifically written literally.
Longest in all, yeah.
As to who, and is, I guess we are, we'd be the holding district because we would have more of the students.
Correct. All right, can you get that together? Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, I have one more question. Kelly, the, the Paris, they don't service a medical need, do they?
So, no, but it's like lifting, somewhere in the bathroom, in the toilet, anything like that. Sometime if there's like an OT or PT requirements, you know, my name is specific. So we do have one say that we register in the summer, and I got field start because of, not saying things like that, but we are getting to start, and we got one for our field start.
Okay, and our PT currently is full-time, right?
Sure.
Oh, share, still. See, I thought we had no more.
Sure, full-time PT, but I believe she contacted that with another show.
She doesn't ask her hours. It doesn't affect her hours.
Long each other.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this? All right, I guess then we'll move on to the agenda. If there are any questions.
Well, just the technicality on the website. The, Lisa's name is still on the vice president. On the website, so it's on. Yeah.
And is there any rhyme or reason to the order on there? Is it alphabetical, is it?
So usually the president, vice president, her first listed. I thought Mrs. Martin, she had updated, updated that, I thought she told me she did. But usually we put their names first, and then I don't know how she lists the other ones.
All right, moving on to finance, number twelve on the agenda for Tuesday. Are there any questions on any of the finance items?
Can I have that one second? Sorry. Under, so just two questions for under board presentation. How do we choose the employee of the year? What's the process of that? Just wondering how that typically works. Is it nominations from?
Each committee has, each school has a small committee that they put together. And then, yes, there's nominations. They talk about each one of the members, there's a vote, and then they select someone.
Okay, just wondering. And then initial budget review, so just being new to the board. I know the budget committee has been meeting a ton. So I guess whatever is decided in the budget on the floor will be presented to the whole board on Tuesday.
Yes, and they call it initial because Robert will present all of the figures, and then it still has to be county approved. And also, if there, you're still able to make some changes before the end of April, which is the final approval.
Got it.
Thanks. No, look, Mrs. Herbert, it is correct on the website. It says, our, our.
Oh, scroll all the way down. I, I just found it by accident.
Oh, okay. That's interesting.
Writing out of my.
All right, yeah, I will make sure Terry fix that.
Thank you. Just making it confusing for the public. So you're asking finance questions?
Finance questions, yes, please.
Can we get, the board get a copy of the legal voice again? Thank you. Questions?
I have a question on lead. Leadership and science workshop? Just was wondering what that is. Looks like it's for coaches. So, yeah, previously, before Mrs. Gallagher has gotten here, they did a contract with this company for science training. So this is the, I believe, the last workshop offered as part of that contract.
Is that only for coaches, or can teachers attend?
It's for our science coaches.
Just the science coaches, a couple thousand dollars, is that one day?
Yep.
And how many coaches are there?
We have two in the district.
And then they turkey, but this is the last of this contract that serves.
I have a question just in general. What are the, what's the difference between coaches and lead teachers?
So the coaches, like Mrs. Lupo, she serves as a full-time coach where that's all she does all day. She goes in classrooms, she gives workshops, she goes to professional learning communities and turkeys things. The lead teachers have a full-time teaching job, and they do the work aside from that. It's a stipend where they might do it during their prep. They may stay after school or early, so it's more of a stipend position for them.
And does the coach work individually with different teachers? Do they reach out to her, or does she reach out to them?
Vice versa, yep, whatever, whatever's needed.
And foundations, it seems quite costly. Is that just a monthly charge, or is that on the bills?
So that would be a purchase for a month for foundations. So we've had that now for years. So if additional workbooks are needed or kits for teachers, that would be purchased for foundations.
Okay, what was the professional development?
We have coaching as well. We have a consultant that comes in that we have a contract with, and that's a part of her contract.
Is that, do you know the yearly amount?
Off the top of my head, I do not know the yearly amount, but she has thirty sessions for the district for the school year.
Okay, thank you. Also, I have a question on the outgoing students. Like, I noticed we're paying tuition. How many outgoing students do we have that we pay tuition for?
Uh, Mary Ann, you have the, you know the number?
Five.
Five.
That's five, oh, okay.
And typically, they're done through the division, they, they send and tell us where they're at a day.
Do we have any special ed students that are? Two.
Five plus two, then?
No, five total. It's all. That or outgoing.
And then incoming tuition, I think Dr. Coolie would said about seventy-two this year.
So we have two, wait, one from Tuckerden, one from Eagleswood, and then we have all the Bass River students. So there's Bass River, there's seventy-two right now, next year we'll have eighty-eight. And then we have, yeah, we just need the Bass River, those other two, because that preschool would be included in that number.
Wow. Sorry, Tuckerden and Harper.
Tuckerden and Eagleswood.
Thomas Hand, is he still working for us? And is, I forgot, you had covered this, but is he charged, is he charged by the session or by the out?
The day. He charges by the day.
Four fifty, I think it was, yeah.
Anything else on finance? Okay, moving on to facilities. Any questions on facilities?
I just, can I ask this question? I drive by George J., and I see the signs that are on events. Are they, why are they there? It just reminds me of baseball.
So years ago, we did fundraising to purchase the signs. So it's a one-time fee when they buy it, and then there's an annual fee to keep it there. So it was just a way to make a little bit more money for advertising. And it went, I believe it went into student activities.
It's not, it's not, it's a, uh?
No. These signs as well.
Is that the same as?
Same thing, yeah.
So they just pay yearly to keep them?
Pay an annual fee to keep it there, yes. And if they wanted a new sign, it, it's an additional fee.
A little, a little draft.
Well, can I add something? So we, um, walked the property, I walked property, the property with Seth, and that chain link fence is getting replaced with vinyl, so we're, uh, sprucing up the George J. Mitchell school. Yeah, so we'll figure out whether the banners are brought inside or put on the outside of the fence, but that, I agree with you, it needs to sprucing up. Yeah, you're welcome.
Just while we're on the topic, the roof is looking a little, I don't know, did you imagine that roof, or is George J.'s roof is fine, it's just, it's, it's all.
It is.
Yeah.
It's, it's all, but it's doing its job.
Right, right. It's a big roof, I know.
They're making repairs, they are making repairs to the roof this summer. Yes, it's a big project this summer that Seth is going, doing at the Mitchell School.
I still say they're paying.
Yes, we're working on it, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna skip informational items and move on to personnel. Is there any questions?
Have you come back to that, because I have a question?
Okay, sorry. Sixteen?
Yes.
Go for it.
Um, sixteen B. The camera project, uh, it says this project addressed blind spots. Where, is there, um, a document that says where all the cameras are? The reason I'm asking is because there was an incident this past week where, uh, someone needed video, or it wasn't there. So it was essentially a blind spot, and it's where the kids lined up to come into the school. So it says all the blind spots were addressed? So just wondering, is, is there a document or something that shows all the coverage? And how do we know that all the spots?
So that would, yeah, I mean, the tech department has that, it's not something that we would be handing out because of security issues, but, um, I can touch base with Terry and see what do the cameras were purchased, they may not be all up yet, I'm not sure if she just is, put the purchase order through, or they're actually having installed.
Okay.
I could ask Terry.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Anything else on this? Okay, now moving on to personnel. Yeah. I, I'm gonna get a start, I'm gonna say for seventeen, for the, um, hiring in between, I guess I would like it to be more specific and not big, so that it doesn't say that for hiring of how many Paris, and how many, you know, shared, um, OT during the interim. So just in that lineup, or approving it, that it states that.
So you wanna add exactly what we're asking to hire them too?
Yes, and then my question goes, it looks like we are hiring, um, I guess, one Par became a, uh, RBT, right? Actually, I'm gonna go step, let's see the step up. So on A, seventeen A, there's a difference between a preschool teacher assistants versus a Par? Yes. And the salary is different, I'm assuming also? So they're on the Par's pay scale? But it's just a different title?
Correct. But it's a lot different.
All right. And then, anyone else have any else? Give everybody a chance to think of their questions. Um, it looks like we're hiring a lot of Paris.
It is a lot, we find.
But I didn't see them in the reservations.
We were short Paris to begin, I mean, I don't know, are we talking ECC or, or KCS?
Let's see, they're, seem to be all George J. Mitchell. One is ECC.
We'll have Kelly give you.
So does that mean we, we have not been in compliance?
We're. So you have a, you know? The case is a little time, that way we're shipping, and obviously going through the time, our negotiations will hopefully not increases, but there is a lot of turnover for these divisions, so they're signing, and some of these may be new, um, I can't remember the names, uh, seriously, really bad, sorry. Yeah, so there are some that are going to come or replacing.
We just had a meeting at the, oh, so the resignation may have been on that agenda, and then Kelly posts, and then she has to interview.
I'm probably interviewing, at least, sort of initially, for our positions.
Other than more money, what can we do to retain them? Is there some kind of exit survey that we know?
Yeah, so great question. We actually started that process probably in January, where now anybody who's waiting for the district, we're doing a Google form survey, we're doing an inverse survey, and really what we're doing is asking them, like, we have suggestions for the district, how can we increase our retention, um, how can we make suggestions before? So, uh, Maryelle and I have been doing those, where everybody's been waiting, and our goal is for the end of the year to be able to present to the board to say, this will be back, that we've been given, and this is helping to make things better for the district.
When did those exit interviews begin? Have they been doing them?
So that was just a process that we started, so January, we started that.
Okay, and that's for all staff too, right? Teaching as well?
Yep, so it's like teachers are professional, related services, anybody that'll need it, supervisors, and we usually will schedule it, and then that way, you know, there's other things that have been going on through that, so in turn, that way, we're getting their, um, their badge and security purposes, making sure technology is, and all those things are now on our, about them.
And do you do any kind of anonymous survey with the current Paris of things that they'd like to see?
So we did that at the beginning of the year, when I first came in, I did a survey, trying to feedback, we had a, a Par meeting, um, who will be going before the end of the year, who will be really trying to, like, make those changes over the summer, because there's a lot going on, a lot of new parts, a lot of new hires, um, to make sure that we're targeting everybody this year, that you're getting a really full picture of what we're wanting to do for that school year.
And then I do a client survey at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, and it doesn't ask for their name, it just says, what's your position, position? So I can sort that by, and take a position, and then I get a bunch of feedback from them too. I think the increase in hiring too is just, for whatever reason, we just see the need this year is so much greater, students are moving in with need, so we have to keep adding to it. So it's not just the turnover, it is really just the, the increase in need of the students.
From the movement that we've gotten with all the IP, uh, students who have recently entered the district, I would say almost, like, I wanna say, like, considerably seventy percent need aid support. So we don't have any that we are able to spare, but we have, I think, created with, um, if there's a part-time need, figuring out schedules, say, we can use this part-time or this full-time hire to support this part-time need in this class, and then support this class over here to try and make sure that we're not over-hiring, and that we are using our central goals to, you know, to have their support, but making sure that their needs are being met as well.
Yeah, I personally know how important paraprofessionals are, and, uh, you know, anything we can do to elevate, even just their status, because, you know, if you're a paraprofessional, you don't think, uh, on par with teachers, but they do just as much.
They're frontline, I started as a parent, so, you know, I didn't work with them too, so I know how important their roles are, and, you know, moving, I think that's where my mindset goes first, is understanding that their role is as important as the teachers because everyone's doing the work, reporting back to the teachers in some classes, um, and we're allowing them for CP, or for learning, they, they have the day in and the day out of, you know, really being a classroom, so, you know, I would say they're, are frontline workers and a real support.
It is generous too, that the board offers them full benefits, because a lot of school districts, we save money for privatizing and not getting benefits, so that is appealing to keep them here as well, so that's something that, you know, we appreciate the board supporting.
I, I guess the question is, we should survey to see if that's an interest for Paris. I'm sure some of them, it is an interest for the benefits, but if they're spousal to the benefits, that might not be a draw for them, it might be a draw for a higher salary.
Well, they would get a buyback then.
That buyback is not, it's, it's three thousand dollars, so it's not a huge, huge buyback.
We would have to negotiate that then, so while we're.
But, but I'm just saying, since the contractor, the Paris isn't settled yet, maybe having some of that feedback, especially as we're negotiating the starting salary, and that's gonna have, you know, as the home wage increases, you know, to think that we're starting, like, start fourteen sixty, what's the home wage?
Twenty dollars.
Fourteen eleven.
Fourteen two or fourteen three?
That was fourteen ten, or?
Fourteen.
I mean, that's.
They're not certified staff though, right?
Correct, and we are negotiating, so we can't get into the details, but we are trying to make a work of the art.
Fourteen thirteen.
What, I, is that fourteen ten?
Uh, is there any kind of, I know we talked about this last time, and maybe if you could share the paraprofessional manual, is there, is there other districts, New Jersey, and countries that have, like, just a paraprofessional program? Because, you know, it is so important, we agree that it's really important, that, have we looked at what best practices are in other districts that could maybe help?
So when you say a paraprofessional program, do you mean like a training program?
Or something like that, you know, teachers have programs, um, so is there something that for paraprofessionals, is it their own sort of entity?
Like maybe continued education?
So we do, so there is the RBT training, which they contain as a forty-hour course, um, I assume we have, it was pretty early in the, I'm not sure if they charged up with that, in the way to continue our education, get a part of training, I mean, we always in, um, you know, employee group or employer wanting to get that training, because it does benefit you in the long run, um, and then we also are now trying to offer, you know, different positions to the RBTs, because they are, you know, so beneficial to meet in our district, um, you know, RBTs who are ID here at this point, and then they also layer it forward, do PIS, so they're really helping to support the level of development that we need. Um, maybe that one is the product fund, RBTH, um, on S, correct? Um, which the district put the, um, school program, and that also supports that as students, so very a lot, but, um, a lot of potential for us to be able to support them that way.
So there's like a pipeline, you know, like in, uh, baseball, you have the wire leaves that you can work your way up, if they want.
Yeah.
Beautiful, I'm sure.
Then we, then they'll be on the board, because, um, we can transfer one or a pair to the RBT division, so it's about very easy as well.
So then, once you're proposing, are they on the list, you being the start, Dr. Mark Cooley for the, uh, budget committee, are they on the new hire list?
So the budget, you gotta, no, you got the list of all of the staff in each building?
Right.
So no, they wouldn't be, because they haven't been hired yet?
No, the new position list, you being the thirteen, so?
No.
They're not on?
No.
This is in addition to?
Yes.
And just wanted to add there too, when you're thinking about par, is it, par support? That's something that we do proactively, because if we can't afford them in the district, then we, we potentially are requiring out of the district support, um, and we have a lot of out of the district, we have a lot of, you know, people turning up for the lemons, so that's also something to keep in mind, that this is something that we're doing to support students, if we can't afford them, then we want to go out of the district, which starts around fifty thousand dollars.
Any other questions? Did the whole board give a, a list of the, um, staff, the organizational chart, or just the budget committee?
Yes, just since the whole, as a group, okay.
Okay, um, no other questions on personnel? Moving on to, I'm just gonna skip here around these reasons, and move on.
I'm sorry, I have one more. The counselor and training, I noticed that the rate there is fourteen thirteen.
How does that compare to, like, a Par?
Or is that because it's a community school?
I mean, it's a completely different program, and she makes her rates based on what she can afford in her budget and program.
They're awful close.
And they don't get, they don't get benefits either.
Sorry, I have one more question. Is this Spiker for the lead custodian, is that, um, for the lead position, or is that the night custodian, or?
That would be the night, that had posted for that, and then no one had applied for that one, so we reposted it, and now he has someone. Got it.
And, and I'm just gonna say, just on the topic of Paris, just because, um, I, I do, like, I miss the fact that there's not Paris in kindergarten anymore. I mean, I think they might have been there for half-day when my son was there, but, um, I can't remember her name, but he was in Mrs. Byker's class, and his parent was left-handed, and he was left-handed, and she helped him learn how to write. So they serve sometimes roles that you would not think, but it, it's, it's an amazing asset in all areas of education, and I do think that it really does, they do serve an amazing, and we should show them how valued that they are, because that's my point. Okay, all right, um, moving on to nineteen, policies and procedures.
I have a suggestion on O one five two. That policy, the last paragraph, I know it's been there, this sentence, but I'm not that comfortable with it, um, the first sentence of the last paragraph, president or vice president who refuses to perform the duty imposed upon them by law, maybe moved by a majority vote of all members of the board. I do think that that's something that, uh, would require investigation and, you know, ethics commission type procedures instead of just a vote by law.
Is that assuming there is no due process?
Yeah, it sounds like, this person, I, you know, read it last week, uh, last month, I was proposing this month, but, yeah, it sounds like there's no due process at all.
I think we talked about this, an executive with the attorney, he did give some, um, advice on this, but he might wanna bring it up to him again.
Specific advice, anybody else?
I do not remember that one, executive.
I think we did talk about it.
No.
I think you referenced the state statute, and what that says, and I guess, I don't know what.
State rights and code. State statute, uh, I don't see any reference to.
Eighteen, eighteen A dash fifteen. Dash one, eighteen A, fifteen to two. Yeah, we can look at it and, you know, look at that up, uh, before Tuesday, get some recognition.
Anything on the regulations for health and P, or the bilingual and ESL?
Thank you for adding that addition.
And I see all the changes were made for by people?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, for me, I think that was Seth, I was trying to find it on the agenda, that I wanted it to be more specific.
Yes, we'll change that.
Just a question on E. Why are, didn't we approve that policy for tails?
I think these are new people.
Of new owners, is that what?
Yes, puppies.
Can, can you, um, let me know, when, when, when are they used?
So I know that Molly is here every day, and, um, Mr. Bokey has, he's not here anymore this evening, he's here earlier, he brings his dog periodically up every day, um, and I don't know about Finn.
I did.
Is it free time, or how do they do it?
So here's, we like Finn, we like to do, like, a Finn Friday, where he's here in the morning, as the kids are walking in the school, and able to, you know, just greet the dog in the morning before our school day starts. Also allowing teachers to kind of sign him out during, like, reading time, it's a big time, so kids can just quietly sit in a planner and greet with the dog, a lot of our kids who have anxiety reading out loud, or shared reading, when the dog's around, you see a whole different personality come out, um, and allowing just teachers to sign up for different times when they feel it'd be beneficial for the dog to be in their room. So right now, we're really exploring how we can use it in beneficial ways, we came up with some ideas, um, based on how other schools have done it, we like to try that first, and then, you know, see other ways that we may be able to bring the dog in, but I can tell you that with Molly, we have quite a few of our students that when they're having a rough day, a five-minute visit with Molly turns their day around.
Yeah, when Nola was here, like, she was part of their resource room, and my daughter, my daughter wrote a book, we sold the book to Nola, so, um, it's a great way to incorporate and inspire, it really, that's really great things. Anything else? A second, I move on, here, I go back.
And then under S, you said the board will be informed of the specific hires, right?
Well, I asked to have that worded change to be more specific, of how many Paris, and the, um, information regarding the OT.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on the informational items?
I have a few. Uh, age twenty? The five at a school suspensions, is that typical? Is there like any kind of trends that we should be aware of?
Um, is it typical? No. Is it typical? No. That's definitely our last resort all the time with students and it's always progressive discipline. We don't have like in-school suspension where we can do something like that with them, so it's, we don't even have after-school detention. So they try to deal with the behaviors in-house, whether it's a recess detention, they sit with the principal sometimes for the day and then parents are contacted, they bring parents in. But if the severity is to, I don't want to say deprive, the, um, contraction, then it would warrant that, but it is few and far between.
I guess always a question, how is staying home missing?
Is it a punishment?
A punishment, like for the day, I mean, I guess depending on your parents maybe, but like you get to sleep in, you're like...
If you have in-school suspension? We don't. Okay. They do, Mr. Nazaroff and Mr. Denny have had it where a lot of students sit up in the front office for most of the day, one of them can keep an eye on them, but it's not really a productive, you know, use of anyone's time, so typically no.
And is there, because they used to work out of school or they had in-school suspensions, does that help? Is how your rehabilitation?
At the K6 age, no, it really doesn't. So it's more the remediation, the counseling, meeting with the parents, coming in with a plan, but no, not at this age.
On the 20B? Drill was, had a question. The fire drills and the emergency drills, what are the emergency drills?
So that could be like a lockdown drill. We do those periodically, we get to do a certain amount a year, but we've been testing the system. This is our safety expert right here, so you might want to come to that.
Make it easy with the word expert. The state mandates exactly the type of drills you have to do throughout the year. There are lockdown drills, there are building evacuations that are non-fire related, there are bomb scares. It is all regulated by state law. Certain ones you have to do twice a year, some you have to do once a year, but the big rule is one safety drill, one fire drill every month. And then you have to document it and you have to supply that to the county at the end of the year to show evidence that you did them. You also have to involve your local police, but that's easy for us because we have SROs embedded into our schools.
Because I would think in today's climate, unfortunately, active shooter is probably one of the...
It's one of them.
Can we still do that lovely walkaway drill?
Yes.
My daughter was here, that's the reason that that was instituted, because of the gas thing that...
That you're...
Walkaway.
Walkaway. Yeah. I think it's the church.
Yeah. It's a very good job.
And the active shooter is just really a shelter in place for lockdown, but it's, you know, because of sensitivity and the...
A lockdown and a... An active shooter requires a lockdown, so it kind of is the same thing.
My last question on this item, um, 20C2. One and three have like a history of different statistics that George Mitchell doesn't. I'm just wondering if that's just because it's the one.
I just think it's aspects of nurse, how they deal with nurses.
Okay, just because I was looking at the other ones to see any kind of trends or, you know, the playground seems like a pretty dangerous place sometimes.
Typically the most to see those.
It's interesting that ECC, there was 50 in February, the 30th was the first started.
I saw that too, because I was looking for a historical trend in like just most visits. And I think maybe we sometimes will legalize the nurses. But just by doing my math, and I know just being in medical fields, insulin pumps and tube feeds are very demanding. So when I looked at it, it looks like there's been like 60 plus kids a day. And from what I can tell, we have one nurse at George Day, one at Frog Con, one at ECC, and then one that floats, morning and afternoon, right? So I'm just wondering how we, we think we're strong enough, nurse one? Just throwing it out there. We are, I mean, some districts have one school nurse for the entire district, so we're really lucky to have the amount of nurses that we have. In some cases, in years past, some students may have had a one-on-one, so they would help out too. And we don't really have the need for that right now, but no, right now, it seems fine.
Those transfers are just a little...
Yes. We just put them on here for our, our own, well, keeping, so we can have it normalized.
One more question. The nursing staff, who do they report up to? Do they report to the principals of each building or?
So our lead nurse is actually Terry Ann, one of the ECC, so she's the person that like does the nursing plan every year and they technically report to her, but in terms of like if they're going to be absent for the day, they would tell the principal.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad you broke that up because I, in one of our documents, it says they reported special ed supervisor. And I never understood that because...
I mean, it's just under that umbrella for the, um, for the nursing plan. But like if they're going to be out for the day, they would just let their instructor know in the building.
Abby, where did you see 60 visits a day in the school?
I just did a tabulation, like I took all visits to the nurse and I added in, um, the med, the patient, the two fees.
Oh, yeah.
Five is that number of days in a month?
Okay.
Yeah. It's around 60, like 55 to 60 from both schools.
For Nick.
Yeah, he took a closer look than I did, yeah. What's that, 25?
It's a lot considering a six-and-a-half hour day, so almost like...
But we do have, if you think 600 kids, I know Kita's two, they fall and need a band-aid. So even though teachers keep it, like, and I know you can relate to this, there are just some frequent flyers that just need a little love from the nurse and then she heads them back in, but she has to record every time that she sees. So I know it does look like a lot and at times, like when there are sicknesses and all of that, like it seems she's inundated. But in the Kita 2 world, 60, I was actually, I was like 60, 13, I thought it would have been even higher than that.
Three to six, it's higher most days, but like Amy's saying, some visits are 10 seconds and a mandate. Some are much more thorough, but to Abby's point, it is, it's a very busy place and we're very fortunate with the nursing staff we have now. They're tremendous, I know you're not talking about their skill level, but I'll share that. They are incredible, but they are very busy places.
And do we still have time to do like the eye screenings, do we still do, you know, hygienic?
Yeah, we have to, that's mandated.
And that's where we get collaborative with the nursing we have. They will theme up to take care of one school and sort of have more staff in a school that's doing screenings on one day, then we'll switch it to the other school.
How many RIs do you have in each school?
They're all RIs.
I know. But I'm asking how many they have?
One permanent.
One.
So one in each of George Day.
And then we have a floater that services the different...
Plus a third floater, right?
Yes.
Of course, the person has the floater and then Terry, which is at the ECC.
I'm curious, is there any requirements after school for the after-school program to go to nurse? Pressing the building or no, there's not, does not?
I just don't.
Does not? Anything else? Okay, sure. Alright, if not, we're gonna move on to public comment. The board now... Okay, I was reading from the other box, I'll turn you off. The board now welcomes the public to comment on any educational issue or school matter of community interest. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of 30 minutes to make their statement. No one may speak more than once on the same topic. You're required to give your name and address before speaking. Would anyone like to speak? Sure. If not, moving on to board forum. Is there anything anyone would like to add?
I'd just like to ask, I guess in the beginning, we offered a tour of the schools. Now the weather's getting nicer, we could maybe sample that.
Absolutely.
Just email me sometime if you'd like to come.
Anybody else would like to come? Is there a limit on that?
No.
I think we, we talked about this, the letter that we wanted maybe to approach.
I think you were gonna send it to the attorney.
Yeah, so I sent some examples, I think Dr. Snyder's gonna send it to you.
Yes, okay.
Just wanted to...
Based on the current...
Yes, okay.
And then I think we've had, I'm just gonna say here now, a couple, we had, we actually had a couple work sessions. So I think at our next meeting on Tuesday, you know, we can think about if this is something we wish to continue, go back to, I know our new members didn't go back to our old method, um, and having our normal monthly board meeting. You have questions, you can email, um, Dr. McCulley, um, and then have our normal board meeting each month, so I guess you can think about it. I believe Laura is going to run the meeting for me on Tuesday, because I will be joining her remotely. So just think about what you like and everyone's schedules and things like that, and how it's working for you. Anyone else?
Thing about the resident forum announcement. We'll discuss that.
Sure.
So I looked at the policy and the part about, you know, you're only allowed to speak three minutes, but it says you can come back after, as long as everybody else is done talking. It's like, it says no one may speak more than once on the same topic. So that's not really per policy. The policy says you can't come back. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. So I don't see the need for that particular sentence in there. Of course, the three-minute requirement is there, I'd like to end it like right after respectful. I don't think we need all the extra language, respectful says it all. And then, again, and community members should try first to resolve their concerns by speaking directly. I mean, we, I think everybody realizes that, changing plans. And if not, we let them know that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary to say it each time. I think it's a little intimidating to the public. That's my opinion. Anybody else?
I, I'm just, I, I'm fine with it just based on having been on the receiving end of it, so I, I'm comfortable with the language.
The only thing I would agree with you on is the having them come back. That can prolong the meeting for hours and it's a hot topic, so to speak. So I'm okay with just the one segment of three minutes.
But it's not per policy, that's the problem, you have to add in the...
I was like, we're changing that.
Changing that, add the words?
To take away the coming back.
I think if you have something to say, I do think you can say it in three minutes.
The other thing is, remember Mr. Lee had explained that the format we're following is everyone's gonna come up with public comment. We're gonna close public comment and then we're gonna address their concerns. So really, they shouldn't have the need to come back up again unless they're reading for six minutes. So they should get their point in three minutes, then everyone's done, then they go through and address what you can or we follow up with them later.
We have seen individuals that have come up and read a speech that was longer than three minutes, didn't finish, and they come back and just didn't finish their speech. So for me, I'm comfortable with this. Anyone else? Okay, and if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any exceptions? Any objections?